So welcome everyone and thank you for joining us today at Fighting Blindness Canada's third annual town hall. You can't believe this is our third year already. My name is Morgan Ennisson. I'm the manager of education here at Fighting Blindness Canada. Before we get started today, I do want to begin by acknowledging the indigenous peoples of all the lands that we are on today. In Toronto, we are operating on the traditional land of the Huron-Wendak, the Seneca, and then the Sasquatch of the Cree. From coast to coast to coast, we acknowledge the ancestral and unceded territory of all the Inuit, Metis, and First Nations people that call this land home. So as I mentioned, we started these town hall meetings in 2020 to sort of give you a peek at what is going on behind the scenes at Fighting Blindness Canada. And to keep you updated on how we are continuing to pursue our mission of funding the best sightseeing research in Canada. Today, we have a really full program, including some familiar faces of our FBC staff and some very special guests. So our first segment, we'll be getting research updates from Larissa Moniz, Dr. Larissa Moniz, who you may know from her viewpoint experiences. And we'll be talking a little bit about what's new and coming in research. Then we have an exciting update from our events team about all of the amazing things that they have planned for the rest of the year. And lastly, FBC President and CEO Doug Earl will be updating us on some of our recent advocacy efforts. And he has a couple of special guests as well. At the end, we will have time to answer your questions. So if things come up as you're watching all these little pieces, please feel free to pop them in the Q and A box at the bottom of your Zoom. Or you can always email me at education@fightingblindness.ca. All right. So before we get started with our research updates, I did just want to invite Doug Earl, our President and CEO, to join us just for some opening remarks to set the tone for today.
Great. Well, thank, thank you, Morgan. And thank you for everyone for joining us. We really appreciate you being a part of our town hall and, and joining us. Please ask questions. We're ready. We're ready. This is your opportunity to ask what's going on at Fighting Blindness Canada, to find out about our programs, our research, and our efforts to fund our mission. So as, as you know, our mission is to accelerate the discovery of new treatments and cures for blinding eye diseases. And we're so proud to have you here to, to share that story. You know, it, it was 48 years ago that we came, that families came together to form Fighting Blindness Canada. And they did it because a loved one was, was diagnosed with a blinding eye disease. And at the time, they, they didn't understand the biology. There was, some of these diseases didn't even have names. You know, we didn't have treatments at the time, and that just wasn't good enough. When your loved one is diagnosed and you want to do something and, and they did. And well, over $40 million has been invested in research since then. And you're going to find out about these amazing initiatives, what, what our supporters can do, the ones that come out to our viewpoint, that, that visit our website, that, that support our advocacy efforts to gain access to new treatments. And of course, our donors, thank you for your support. We're going to find out about how your money is being invested to fund our programs and fund that incredible groundbreaking research. So without further ado, let me pass it back to Morgan and the team to share what's happening at Fighting Blindness Canada and to be ready for your questions at the end of our show.
Awesome. Well, thank you so much, Doug. And Ann and Doug, feel free if you want to turn your cameras off for the next little bit. We'll call you back shortly. So at the core of our mission is research. So we're going to start off today by talking about research. And of course, the lovely lady on the left of me on my screen is Dr. Larissa Moniz, who is our Director of Research and Mission Programs. And I have some questions for you, Larissa, about research. Are you, you ready to go?
I'm ready to go, Morgan.
So you've had a kind of an exciting spring. You just got back from a conference, I think our first in-person conference that you've been to in a few years with the pandemic. So you went to the Association for Research in Vision and Ophthalmology Conference, which is often known as ARVO. And I was reading online that there, this research organization, they have over 11,000 members worldwide of researchers and people associated with vision research, which is so cool. So how was this experience of going to the conference and what were some of your highlights?
Yeah, it was a whirlwind, both in terms of one of my first scientific conferences, one of my first trips actually since COVID started. And it was actually really, really great to be back to in-person events. I think we're all probably a little bit nervous when we're, we're getting out there. But I, I know we, we feel we have sort of pivoted very nicely for some things. You've like brought Viewpoint online, which has been great. Working online with all my colleagues has actually been really successful. But the connections and conversations you get from being at an in-person conference, you can't really replicate that very easily. So it was a really wonderful event. And then in terms of the science, because that's, I think, what people want, want to hear about. So this time at ARVO, there weren't a lot of new updates about clinical trials, actually. Instead, there seemed to be a lot of reflection about the results of recent clinical trials. And so over the past year or so, if anybody follows us on E-News, you might have noticed that we have reported on a few clinical trials that announced, or as they call it, reported, that they didn't meet their endpoints, which is disappointing news for sure. But it also is an opportunity for learning. So at the conference, the researchers were really trying to dive a bit further into the data and understand what it means for the treatments and for other clinical trials. So I thought I would just take a little bit of a step back and I thought it would be helpful to describe what an endpoint is. So when a clinical trial is being set up, the scientists who are in charge of it, they have to decide before they start, what are they going to measure to determine if a potential treatment is successful or not? And this is called an endpoint. And in a clinical trial, an endpoint is pre-specified, which means you say right at the beginning what an endpoint is going to be, and then you can't change it afterwards. And in clinical trials, if you're talking about new treatments for vision loss, some examples of an endpoint could be that after a treatment, can somebody see more lines on a chart, which is also called best corrected visual acuity or BCVA? For a treatment that some of you may have heard of Luxturna, which was the first gene therapy that was approved for an inherited retinal disease in the phase three clinical trial, the primary endpoint for that treatment was measuring improvement in the ability of individuals who'd received Luxturna to navigate a mobility course at different levels of life. So very different, different types of things. So going back to ARVO, some of the, the trials that sort of, I, I really noticed was they talked about one for choraremia gene therapy trial. So there've been a few gene therapy trials for choraremia over the years. And one of the most promising was a gene therapy by Nightstar and Biogen. And that was being tested at a phase three level clinical trial. And last year, they unfortunately reported that they didn't meet their primary endpoint. And the primary endpoint in this trial was that people who received the gene therapy had to have at least a three-line gain on an eye chart after treatment. And so Dr. Robert McLaren from Oxford, who was the principal investigator on the trial, he discussed this a little bit more. And he was saying that if the primary endpoint instead had been pre-specified as being a two-line gain, then actually the trial may have been considered a success. So it did show that the treatment was having some success, just not quite as much as the pre-specified endpoint, which was determined in conversation with the FDA, which regulates clinical trials as well as drug approvals. Another trial that we've talked about as well at Fighting Blindness Canada, we talked about this in our March E-News, I believe, was ProQR, a treatment from ProQR called Sepafarzin. And this was a phase two, three trial for a potential treatment for Liber Cageminal Amamosis 10 or LCA 10. And again, this trial announced they didn't meet their primary endpoint of significantly increased best corrected visual acuity. And, and they tested in this case, individuals who had received the treatment and they compared it to individuals who hadn't received the treatment, but had a sham treatment. And in this case, the principal investigator was Dr. Bartley Roy from Gant University. And he had done some further analysis on the data and had compared the results to earlier trials, which were really, really promising. And in earlier trials, at the phase one, phase one, two trials, in that case, they had compared sort of improvement in vision in an untreated eye to a treated eye in the same individual. But the FDA wanted for the phase three trial to compare completely separate individuals treated versus untreated. And again, when they did more analysis, they found that if they had actually compared the untreated eye to the treated eye in the same individual, there was actually quite a big difference. But because of the way that LCA 10 progresses, there's a lot of what they call heterogeneity in the population. So some people might progress more quickly, some people, their vision might, the vision loss might progress more slowly. So it's hard to compare actually different individuals. So sort of some of the take-home messages, because yes, this, this happened. So what are the researchers going to do next? And basically, even though it was, as I mentioned, slightly disappointing, they're really learning from these experiences. And the, the thing that all the researchers kept talking about was that it's really, really important to make sure that the endpoints that are picked are appropriate. So getting a good treatment is good, but setting up the clinical trial is also just as important if you want to see a result or a significant result. So a few things that I'm going forward that researchers will be doing, one is of course, doing more natural history studies or really getting information from these natural history studies about how the disease is progressing and vision occurs in, for different diseases. Because for, for different people, for different diseases, it could be very different, the endpoints you pick. A second thing is, I'm sort of maybe spending more time in discussion with the FDA and other regulatory bodies, really explaining why certain endpoints might be more appropriate for one disease than for another. And the FDA is used to approving treatments for maybe more common diseases like glaucoma or age-related macular degeneration, where the endpoints are appropriate for those diseases, but might not be for some of the more rare diseases or inherited retinal diseases. And actually, this was an interesting point. Some of the researchers mentioned that it might be more appropriate to increase the length of clinical trials. Currently, most clinical trials are one to two years long. And you're starting to look for the impact of a treatment after six months, after 12 months. But if a disease is very slow progressing, looking after six months, you might not actually see a difference between somebody who was treated, somebody who wasn't treated, or a treated eye and an untreated eye. This might be challenging for the biotechnology or pharma sponsors, because obviously, the longer a trial goes, the more expensive it is. But it might also improve the chance that differences are seen after, after treatment.
I find that so fascinating. We've talked about this a couple of times now, just that, that there's the science and there's the trial. But then this, this construction of the trial has such a huge impact on the outcome. So I think that's a really interesting thing to talk about and to keep thinking about for the people who are doing this important work. So I know you mentioned gene therapy, and I remember back in 2019, after the last ARVO, hearing so much buzz about gene therapy. It was like the hot topic of the moment. And in our recent viewpoint that we had in Vancouver, we had a great talk by Dr. Beth Simpson, who came and kind of explained to us sort of the state of gene therapy right now. Were there any other updates about therapy or associated things that, that you wanted to share?
Yeah, there's still a lot of buzz about gene therapy, about stem cell therapies. There was actually a lot of buzz about prostheses and optogenetics. So yeah, there's so many, so many things happening, so many treatments that are being, potential treatments tested in clinical trials, so many things coming up in development. As I mentioned, they didn't really give us any specific updates on new clinical trials. Another big theme that I thought was very interesting was a lot of researchers are starting to look at the role of inflammation that might be having an impact on how successful a gene therapy treatment is, or other types of treatments such as stem cell treatments. And so there was a lot of, a lot of conversations about this, so both looking at animal models, some more on the laboratory, but also looking at individuals who have gone through clinical trials or now being treated with a gene therapy, Luxturna. They're starting to notice that there is, a lot of people are showing signs of inflammation. And sometimes it can be in very, very rare cases, it can be very serious inflammation. But in more cases, it's a very low level, what they call subclinical levels of inflammation. They're not 100% sure what this means, but they are starting to think that it might be impacting how effective the treatments are. So if the immune system gets activated and they notice, or they recognize, say, a gene therapy or a new stem cell as foreign, the immune system might go and essentially eliminate the cell that has a gene therapy or eliminate the new cell that was developed from a stem cell. And so obviously, this would reduce the effectiveness of the treatment. And in some, like I mentioned, very rare cases, if inflammation gets out of control, it can cause extra damage in the eye. So it's really important to make sure that that doesn't happen. And so some of the things that the researchers were discussing and are starting studying more, both in the lab, but also in clinical trials, is different immunosuppression protocols. So when you go for an organ transplant, I think a lot of people know that you would be on immunosuppressive drugs. So they're looking at different combinations of drugs to reduce inflammation. And they're also looking at more innovative ways to cloak the gene therapy or cloak the, the stem cells or the, the cell-based therapies, so that maybe the immune system won't recognize it as foreign. So these are, these are sort of ongoing research right, right now.
I love hearing your descriptions. It's, I think, for me, the most exciting thing, but also the most frustrating things about, about science, right? Is that you hit sort of a wall, but then it opens up more questions that then you have to look into. And it just keeps going and learning more and more with every clinical trial, with every experiment that's done. Something is, is taken away and learned from that. And I think that's, that's really cool to hear about all of those things that they're working on.
And it was really exciting seeing the, like sort of the collaboration that you were seeing in the rooms, where people were presenting research, and then you'd have people asking questions or seeing how it impacted their work. And going away, I know I talked to some scientists who had gone, were so excited after going to some sessions where they had learned new things or new techniques. So yeah, really building on each other, sort of moving closer and closer to, to these new treatments.
Yeah, that's, I think, and that's the kind of collaboration that maybe has been a little bit lacking over the past couple of years, right? There's just nothing like being in the same room and being able to, to talk about those things. That's fantastic.
You know, I was actually wanting to ask you, Morgan, because I know you, you mentioned our great Viewpoint Vancouver session, which was so, again, so nice to be back in person. And I, I know you'll probably say this, but we have one coming up in Toronto in October. So save the date for October 2nd, too, for anybody who's interested. But I was wondering if you could give us a bit of a, like some highlights from our education department? Because I know you've also been sort of busy out and about.
Yeah, absolutely. It's been such an amazing and busy spring so far. As you mentioned, we were in Vancouver at the end of April for our first live, actually, it's our first live viewpoint. So we've kind of rebranded over the pandemic. If you've been with us many years, you might have come from Vision Quest in the past. We're now Viewpoint. It was our first live viewpoint. And it was just a really fantastic day. We had so many members come out from the community to, to meet with us and to hear. We had a great program of speakers that had topics from age-related macular degeneration, cataracts, inherited retinal disease, glaucoma, gene therapy, genetic testing, inherited retinal disease, whole gamut. It was amazing. So if you're feeling a little bit of Vancouver envy, don't worry. We did tape all of our sessions and we're going to be rolling those out over the summer. Hopefully, stay tuned. In the next week or two, we're probably going to have our first one coming up, which is going to be really great. And then, yes, Larissa mentioned, we're also gearing up for our Toronto viewpoint, which is going to happen October 2nd. It's a Sunday, and we're going to be in downtown Toronto, the Toronto reference library. Registration is already open, so you can find out more information on our website at fightingblindness.ca. We've got, Larissa and I have been cooking up a really exciting program behind the scenes, and we're going to have a nice exhibit affair and lots of opportunities for our participants to come together and to, to network. It's going to be a really wonderful day. So I do encourage you, if you're in the GTA, to, to join us for that. And if you have any questions about our education initiatives, Viewpoint either in person or live, you can definitely email me at that education@fightingblindness.ca email. So kind of back to research, back to viewpoint, earlier this year, Larissa, we were so excited to be able to announce eight new research grants that focused on diverse topics across vision research. And I was thinking about this, say, we've actually already featured many of those researchers in our viewpoint series this year. And by the end of the year, I'm hoping all eight of them will have made an appearance at our viewpoint. And they've given us such great information about their projects. So what else is new? What's coming up in FBC-funded research?
Yes, this year, we've, we've got a lot going on. So we have the AEU Research Grants, like you mentioned, that we, we announced in January. And we have another competition that we are just wrapping up now. It is our Clinician Scientist Emerging Leader Award Competition. So this is a really, really special competition for us, because it funds trainees who are pursuing a clinical practice, either in ophthalmology or in optometry, as well as research. And these are really important individuals in the vision research, sort of, what's it called, environment? Because they help us move research that's taking place maybe in a laboratory or translational research and sort of translating it directly to patients. So really important that we have more doctors or, doctors or surgeons who are also doing, doing research. And so the competition or program is entering its sixth year and it continues to grow. So this year, we had so many wonderful, strong, compelling applications. And it was really, really inspiring actually to see the quality of candidates, of individuals who are dedicated to eye health and vision research. And I'm, I'm not going to make an announcement now, because we haven't, we haven't finalized the results yet. But we will be announcing the results in the coming weeks. So I think, stay tuned. Hopefully in June, we'll be able to let you know about some of the other, sort of, yeah, really up and coming research that we are going to be funding and so proud to be supporting.
Well, that was quite the teaser. We'll have to stay tuned. I know that's what we're going to. So that's, that's amazing. I mean, we have so many great projects that are already funded. But I know, I've heard a lot of buzz, about a brand new research competition that's kicking off this year. And I wondered if you could tell us a little bit about the details for it?
Of course, very happy to. And I really have to say that our, all of the research that we're talking about is only possible because of our generous donors, many of whom are on this call today. And because of the generosity, we've been able to continue to support our research grant competition, our Clinician Scientist Emerging Leader Competition, but also launch a really exciting new initiative. And this one is called the Transformative Research Awards. It's a new research program that we have launched this year. We're hoping to run it again in future years, but this year, the theme is retinal degeneration. So we are going to be funding up to two awards of $1.25 million each, and that will take place over five years. And the research can be in discovery research, translational research, or clinical research. So really broad, but any sort of research that will help us, help the community learn more about retinal degeneration and importantly, develop new treatments for retinal diseases, including age-related macular degeneration, glaucoma, and of course, inherited retinal diseases such as retinitis pigmentosa, Usher syndrome, choraremia, and on and on.
So how is this, this competition specifically different from things that we've done in the past? And what are we hoping to achieve with this, this competition?
So as we mentioned, the eight awards that we had funded in January from our research grant competition, this is sort of what more Fighting Blindness Canada more commonly does, which is provide smaller research grants. So $200,000, which, you know, obviously is still a lot of money, but it only goes so far in the research world. And we really feel that this provides important seed funding. And we like to fund quite a few researchers at one time, so really sort of spread the money out. So a lot of researchers can develop new data, sort of essentially pilot, pilot data, test out an innovative idea. And then with that new data, they can apply for larger funding for awards from organizations like Canadian Institutes of Health Research, which are some of the like large national funders. Now, in sort of comparison, the Transformative Research Awards, it's really a different scale of funding. So as I mentioned, each award will be $1.25 million, spread out over five years. So it gives researchers the time to really develop a very large research project and research program. So we're looking for very ambitious, very innovative projects that already have preliminary data. So we want to make sure, like, we're going to fund things that have a high likelihood of really moving the field forward and having a significant impact on the field. Another difference, which is a slightly smaller difference, is that this competition, we've opened it up to international and Canadian researchers. So there are some, you know, really strong Canadian researchers out there, but there's also some really great ideas happening internationally. And I already know that there are a number of applications that are coming in that are going to be collaborations between international and Canadian researchers. So really looking for, for the best ideas out there in, that could drive forward innovative treatments for retinal degeneration.
That's so exciting. I'm really looking forward to seeing the applications that come in. So just briefly, because I think we're running low on time, can you give us just a quick rundown of the timeline for these awards? And when can we, and our audience, expect to hear more about the next steps?
Yeah, so the competition is taking place in two stages this time. So the first stage, there will be a brief proposal that applicants put in. And then they will, those applications will be reviewed. And the top applications, the ones that have the most likelihood of being funded, will be invited to submit a full, larger, more detailed application, which is due in October. And then we're likely to announce the, the winners in early 2023, so maybe like spring 2023. And the LOIs are, are letters of intent, so the brief application, they are going to be due in two weeks. No, no, next week. They're due next week, actually. So any researchers listening, you have one week to get in your registration letter. So really, really excited as well to see, to see what, what ideas come, come forward.
That's fantastic. Well, thank you so much for sharing all of these great updates with us today. Lots of exciting things to look forward to, and we'll definitely keep everyone out there informed as the process goes along. So speaking of which, of looking forward and the exciting things coming up, our fundraising events team is currently working on a very big roster of upcoming events that you can participate in and help raise funds for all the incredible research that's going on that Larissa just talked about. So earlier this week, we sat down with Susan Tecker, who's our Senior Manager of Fundraising Events, and her whole team, and they wanted to share some updates with you about what is coming up.
Thanks, Morgan. So happy to join you today. We certainly do have a great team of volunteers and team members who are excited to bring back our in-person fundraising event safely this year. We're really looking forward to building back our fundraising community stronger than ever. I wanted to introduce you to some of our team members today. So there's a face of the name behind the event. And if those of you who are watching plan to join us in person, come up and say hi. Maria Raita is working on Cycle for Sight Ontario and Newfoundland. Maria Karakoulis is supporting our Comic Vision Toronto volunteers, the Eye on the Cure event, and all of our awesome community fundraising events. Catherine Grant is out in Vancouver, supporting our West Coast Cycle for Sight and West Coast Comic Vision events and our volunteers out there. Brenda Danard is our staff partner for the Ride for Sight events. And Jennifer Mannering is supporting all the events across the board and is our right-hand person here in the office. Our Cycle for Sight fundraising events are first up in June and July this year. And this year, we're offering virtual and in-person options. Catherine, since West Coast is first up on June 11th in Langley, B.C., what can the cyclists expect on that day? Anything special?
Well, Langley event, of course, will feature the most scenic ride along the Fraser River, around historic Fort Langley, and back to West Langley Park. The barbecue this year is going to feature homemade lasagna, but we also have gluten-free and vegetarian options for the riders. And this year, we have live entertainment. We have the Speak Easy Trio at the finish line and two accredited masseuse that will be giving ride relief by donation. And we have a silent auction, raffle prizes, 50/50, as well as limited edition West Coast Cycle for Sight t-shirts and hoodies. The weather's going to be beautiful, and so will the ride.
That's fantastic. Maria, things that are really happening in Ontario. I know that we've got, one of our volunteers is riding right across Canada. Will you tell us a little bit about that?
Actually, I'll tell you a couple of things, a couple of local heroes doing things. So we have Fane, who is one of our Ottawa committee members. He's riding right across the continent and he is on his way back home now. He's been riding and raising funds for vision research. Then we have Maya Jonas. And if you don't know the name, she's a Paralympian skier and then went on to do a marathon. She's going to be on course and on our journey with us, both in Ontario and Aliston, as well as in Newfoundland. So we have a lot going on as far as our local heroes, but then we have hundreds of participants right across the country as all the rest of our heroes. Then, just a little bit about the Ontario events, we have our Toronto event held in Aliston on June 18th. So just right after the West Coast, we're, we're kicking off here in Ontario. Then we move on to our Ottawa Experience, which is pedal paddle, step or stretch. So you can do anything you like. So if you'd like to take a tour, a cycle tour with our Rent-a-Bike Tour, you can sign up for that. You can learn how to paddle a dragon boat and participate in the Ottawa Dragon Boat Festival. This is all going on, on the 26th, and that's free to register in. And if you don't pedal paddle, step or stretch, or cycle, you can always continue to join us just virtually at any time in any way. But if you'd like more information, make sure that you check us out at cycleforsight.ca. You can email us at cycleforsight@fightingblindness.ca. And I think I'm going to throw it over to Jennifer to tell us a little bit about how you can participate if you can't make one of our in-person events or if you don't cycle. Jennifer, can you tell us a little bit about how else people can get involved and move with us?
For sure. Our virtual options in the last couple of years have been a great opportunity for anyone across Canada or across the world to take part. And we wanted to continue to provide that option this year, because it has been very popular. For example, at the West Coast, we have two riders doing a virtual ride. And they will be riding from Victoria all the way to Sydney. So there's lots of great options. You can move in any way you'd like. And the virtual party will be on June 18th, to course. Um, and the virtual party will be on June 18th to correspond with our Toronto event. Uh, so come join the virtual celebration and you can see some of the fun that's happening so far across the country.
That all sounds just amazing, you guys. And Jennifer, what about fundraising? Is there a deadline or can, can anyone fundraise regardless of what they're, how they're participating or how they're moving?
Absolutely. June 1st is the deadline to meet the incentive prize levels in order to guarantee the prizes to be delivered to you before event day. But you can fundraise right up until July 15th and we will send the prizes to you. And then on July 18th, we're going to be drawing a pair of Air Canada tickets, uh, that anyone who participated could win. And you can check out the fundraising prizes on our website, cycleforsight.ca and find out all the details there, or of course, contact us for more information.
So much going on, so much going on. And then Brenda, our longstanding motorcycle ride, Ride for Sight, is coming back again this year as well. And tell us a little bit about what the riders can expect for this year's event.
Well, we're excited because we're able to celebrate in three different provinces this year. And, uh, we'll start out in, uh, Newfoundland and Labrador in the welcoming city of Gander. We look forward to seeing all of the riders we haven't been able to see for a couple of years there. Next, we're going to be headed out to Calgary, where we'll kick off their $1,000 poker run right, uh, at the southeast end of the city in New Brighton. Um, they'll make their way to High River and have a full day of motorcycle events. And of course, the one that started them all, uh, Central Ontario. Uh, they'll be headed back to Finland Falls, uh, August 12th weekend, and it's a full weekend of bands and motorcycle fun. So you won't want to miss that. And also in support of Ontario, um, we have a volunteer group that's running a bandathon out of Kincarton on June 11th. So if you're in that area, you might want to check that out. It's entry by donation, so it's a good deal. Uh, if you want to register or get more information, visit rideforsight.com. And of course, you can follow us on Facebook to stay up to date on everything happening at the three different rides.
Those are our summer events and every dollar raised will help us to continue to drive critical vision research forward. And if you like to plan ahead, like some of us event planners do, uh, we have some fall events coming up as well and we'd love to share those with you. Maria, tell us what's coming up and what you're working on and how can our FBC community support those?
Thanks, Susan. Uh, so excited to present that Comic Vision is coming back live and in person. It's the Comic Vision Gala in Toronto with Rick Mercer on October the 27th at the Liberty Grand. Uh, Comic Vision Vancouver will return in November with tons of comedy and friends. And our Eye on the Cure event will also take place in November. Think about Dragons' Den meets American Idol. It's really exciting. Um, where everyone during the session has an opportunity to hear about and then vote on an exciting vision research project. Um, information for all these events can be found on our FBC website and involved page. And we always need passionate volunteers and members to join our committees to help us with planning and of course, share the cause and the events. Um, and Sharon, just let everyone know about what's happening and about all the amazing things that FBC is doing.
Certainly lots of busy, busy times ahead for sure. So if someone wants to fundraise Maria on their own, like outside of coming to an event or they don't want to buy a ticket or they can't join us, um, live and in person, are there other ways that they can help us and fundraise and support vision research?
Absolutely. Uh, become a sight saver, create your own fundraising campaign, um, like a backyard concert. Or if you want, instead of birthday money, ask for people to make a donation on behalf of your birthday, you know, to FBC, um, in lieu of, you know, of anniversary gifts or wedding gifts. Why not? You could also create your own Facebook page, you know, to fundraise supporting FBC.
That sounds great. And I know a lot of people create their birthday fundraisers on Facebook. And if you follow Fighting Blindness Canada on Facebook, there's an easy way to create your birthday fundraiser right from there. So, um, and if you need any help, certainly give us a shout or send us an email and we're happy to give you a hand. We hope there's an option for everyone to get involved in fundraising for vision research this year. We've got lots of options for you and whether that's simply walking the dog, participating in our virtual Cycle for Sight, if you create a Facebook fundraiser for your birthday, or if you donate to an individual fundraiser, either a sight saver or a Cycle for Sight participant or a Ride for Sight participant. We appreciate all your efforts and dedication of our FBC community each and every year. And we are so grateful for your participation every time. We depend on the passion and help from our fundraisers, big and small, and everyone truly makes an impact. Thank you, and we hope to see you at one of our events this year.
Fantastic lineup, um, of fundraising events that are coming up. So exciting to hear all of the hard work that the events team has been, uh, uh, working on. Um, so as we've mentioned, Cycle for Sight is just on the horizon. So I also have another little video with some special guests that I wanted to share. Uh, we thought it would be nice to hear from some of the members of our community about why that they are choosing to participate, uh, this year in Cycle for Sight. So in one moment, we'll have, uh, listen to some of our community members share their thoughts.
Cycle for Sight is your perfect one-day ride supporting vision research. We spoke with some of our community members to find out what inspires them to participate.
My name is Carol and I'll be participating in the Cycle for Sight in Ottawa on June the 26th. I became involved with Fighting Blindness Canada well over 20 years ago when our older son was diagnosed with retinitis pigmentosa, uh, blinding, um, genetic disorder. And I'll be participating in several different ways. We have a magnificent dragon boat race or run. And, uh, also we'll be doing, um, in concert with Rent a Bike Ottawa, we'll be doing a two to two and a half hour bike tour. And we encourage everyone in the Ottawa region to join us. If that, those two activities aren't your cup of tea, feel free to do anything virtually, do yoga, do jumping jacks, bake cookies. Help us fundraise because when we fundraise, all that money goes into treatments and cures, not just to help my son, but all the Canadians living with visual impairments.
Hi, I'm Jane and I'll be participating this year virtually from Victoria, B.C., uh, hiking the trails with my friends. And I choose to participate in and fundraise for Cycle for Sight because my mom is losing her vision to AMD. And I see the way she struggles every day to do the things she used to love to do. And I feel like if there's something I can do to help find treatments and cures for vision loss of any kind, I'm in.
Hi, my name is Laura and I am so excited to be participating in Cycle for Sight this year out of Aliston, Ontario on June the 18th. There are events across Canada, B.C., Ottawa, Toronto, and Newfoundland, Labrador that you can participate in. I'm passionate about Cycle for Sight because I never thought that I would lose my license or give up my license before my 50th birthday due to vision loss. And I did. It can happen to any of us so quickly. And Cycle for Sight raises funds that go toward eye-related research, innovative eye-related research that's done here in Canada. Let's all get together and support this great organization and this worthy cause. If you want more information, please, uh, look to cycleforsight.ca or look to sponsor someone riding in the ride. Thank you.
Cycle for Sight West Coast is happening June 11th. In Toronto, you can join us on June 18th. In Ottawa, June 26th. In Newfoundland, Labrador on July 10th. The National Virtual Movement is happening anytime, anywhere, but you can join us, the online celebration on June 18th. For more information, visit cycleforsight.ca.
Awesome. Well, thank you so much. I want to say thank you to Carol and Laura and Jane for joining us and talking about their, their plans, um, and all the event team. I'm not really sure exactly what we'll be doing yet. Uh, in the last couple of years, uh, my daughter and I have gone for a nice nature walk. Uh, this year, uh, Doug Earl and I might be cooking up something a little different. So you may have to watch our social media to see what we decide to do for the virtual Cycle for Sight this year. Um, so I'll leave that little tidbit with you. Uh, all right. So we're moving right along. We're going to, uh, work on our advocacy section now and we're going to talk, um, to a couple of special guests. So in our final segment, we really wanted to provide, um, some updates about our ongoing advocacy efforts. Um, many of you may know that we've been, uh, working with, uh, getting Luxturna, the gene therapy treatment, working to try to get that accessible to Canadians. And so we have, um, a session here that Doug, uh, sat down earlier this week with our special guest, Jamie Eckert. Uh, Jamie is a proud mom of a young boy who was diagnosed recently with RPE65 mutation, which would make him a candidate for the gene therapy, uh, Luxturna. So for more, I'm going to turn this over to Doug and Jamie.
Great. Well, welcome, Jamie. Uh, thank you for joining us today. We really appreciate you joining the Fighting Blindness Canada's Town Hall Meeting. And I, I'm just wanting to welcome you and, uh, and say hello.
Hi there. I'm Jamie Eckert. I am the mother of Anthony Eckert, who was diagnosed with LCA last September.
Oh, wow. So that, that was really, uh, recently. Uh, can you tell, tell us, share with us a little bit about your journey on how you, uh, knew that there was something that might be wrong and, and how did you get your diagnosis?
Well, you know, when Anthony was born, he was premature. Um, and around, I would say, two and a half, three months, he started, um, having nystagmus, which is the bouncing of the eyes. Um, and it would occur quite often when he was looking at bright lights. Um, so he would look at a bright light and then his eyes would start to bounce. Um, so we took him to a pediatric ophthalmologist here in Saskatoon. Um, and she didn't really seem to think that there was much of a concern at that time and just wanted to follow up in about six months' time. It did start to fade away, the nystagmus. Um, it got better over time, but the, the constant needing and wanting to stare at the brightest light in the room was so prevalent that he would barely even look into mine and his father's eyes. It was, it was hard to kind of get him to stare right at us. So, yeah, we kind of knew from the beginning there was something wrong. We just weren't sure what. And over the course of time, I was, uh, working at an ophthalmology office and I was able to get Anthony, um, an eye exam and get him a little bit more seen by ophthalmology. And when he was about five, I would say, we were told that there definitely was something wrong with the back of his eye, the retina. Um, but the doctors couldn't further determine because they didn't have the proper testing here in Sask, Saskatoon. Um, so at that point, I believe it was last April, um, 2021, we were sent to the Stallerie Hospital in Edmonton, where he had an E, I think it, I believe it's an ERG, um, test done, uh, in the dark. It was quite unique. I was quite interested to see how that was done. Um, and about a month or two later, we did have the, the final results. And that was then forwarded to Dr. Ian McDonald, who interpreted the imaging report. Um, but he kind of said the same thing, that it was not enough to determine what Anthony had or what was causing the issue of his low vision. Um, so he wanted to do genetic testing, which I thought was a great idea because I wanted to just get the ball rolling. I wanted to figure out now and, and I'm quite impatient when it comes to things that I'm hyper-focused on. And at that time, it was figuring out what was wrong with Anthony. So that was sent to, I believe, Finland, where he had a swab tested. And from June to September, they did the testing. And then in September last year, I had the, uh, meeting with his genetic counselor and Ian McDonald, we did a Zoom meeting. And that's when we had found out that it was LCA.
And what, what did it mean when you got, when you got the genetic diagnosis? Like what, what did it mean? What did you feel like?
You know, I kind of knew. Um, there was a point where I was working for an optometrist and we kind of bounced ideas off of each other from his clinical diagnoses, from my personal experience with Anthony. And LCA was definitely brought up, but there was things that were going on in Anthony's life that weren't really saying LCA. And Anthony's father and I were thinking more, um, RP, retinitis pigmentosa. Because I, I believe he showed, showed more signs of, of that. And when I found out, it was, I cried. I got very upset because I think it was more a relief of, I'm right. I knew it. I knew something was wrong.
So when, when, uh, when you found out that it was the RPE65 gene and you, I, I know you already, uh, did some homework and, uh, found out that there was a treatment approved by Health Canada. How, how did you feel about that?
Oh, I was extremely happy. And you know, it, I, I did find out about it at the meeting with Dr. Ian McDonald because he did explain to me that there has been, um, an approval by the FDA that Luxturna could possibly be treating patients in Canada. He did say that possibly by the end of this year, we could be hearing, um, more information about Anthony actually having the treatment done. But I kind of sat on that for a month or two and I wanted to update myself and I found lots of news articles, um, especially with the young girl in Nova Scotia, um, that it's not being, yes, Nora, that it's not being covered under each provincial health government. And that's where I went nuts. I spent hours researching, calling, speaking to anybody I could possibly speak with to help Anthony get this treatment. And that's how I found Fighting Blindness Canada.
Well, we're very pleased that you did and that, that you've been, uh, very helpful in sharing your story. And, and we're trying to get the word out. So what, what would it mean if, if the government of Saskatchewan and, uh, were to approve, uh, the funding so that Anthony could get the treatment?
Man, that would, it would, it would cause, it would make me feel so relieved because every night I go to bed thinking if my son is going to be able to drive a car, work at night, walk at night, um, anything, any, anything that he struggles with today. I don't want him to have that struggle in the future. I want him to live and normal life. And I already see it affecting him. And if, if this treatment's available, we should be able to have it for Anthony.
So if you were meeting with Premier Scott Mo, what would you say?
There's a few things I would like to say, but definitely not on this Zoom call. I, you know, I actually sent him a personal message, um, when I found approved Luxturna on the internet. Um, and I had forwarded it to hundreds and hundreds of family and friends on the internet. I took his email and I sent him a personal one instead of the generated letter. And I got the same letter everybody else did. The generic letter that was like, yes, we understand, we're trying our hardest, but we have to wait. But they just, they don't understand. And if I were to see him, I would ask him, why not? There's not a lot of people in this province that need this treatment. And they make so much money and they should be able to help the future of this province, which are these young children who could go blind in no time without this treatment. You know?
We've, you know, we, uh, Fighting Blindness Canada funded a study actually to do the social economic impact of, of what it means living with an inherited blinding eye disease like Anthony. And, and we found that, that it was a $1.6 billion impact. So, so just from the pure economics, uh, you know, by, by doing this one-time treatment, uh, transforming Anthony's life, uh, you know, that, that impact. And, and a lot of it is, is actually born on families. It's, it is, it is impacting people's lives and the quality of life. So, so we, we're working hard and thank you for sharing, uh, approveluxturna.ca. And I would really encourage anyone to fill out that, uh, form, to go to the website, send an email to your premier, to your health minister, your local provincial representative. We've updated it, of course, uh, you know, Health Canada approved Lux, uh, Luxturna as a treatment in Canada in October, uh, 2020. So, uh, very shortly afterwards, it was recommended by the bodies that do that it be publicly funded. And it took over a year for the, the office that negotiates on behalf of the provinces to agree, uh, to, uh, move forward and try to gain access to, uh, Luxturna. So that was November, uh, 25, uh, 2021. They, they say, uh, Jamie, they, they say that their goal is to have negotiations finished in four months. That's their standard. Well, it's been six months now. And, and you know, your son and others like, like him are losing, are losing those photoreceptors. And you have to have enough of the photoreceptors to be able to, uh, for the treatment to be effective. Uh, and, and so, so we're And and so so we're, we're working hard and thank you for sharing approvedluxturna.ca. That's really helpful and I hope that everyone that's listening today will, will go to the website, will fill out the the new, the updated message to your premier and health minister. Because it's taking too long. We need this negotiated and and we need access. Not, not only for the current treatment, but but we, you know, it's, it's such a challenge and ordeal that you're going through, sharing your story. I'm sure this is not something you were thinking you're gonna do, but but what you do for your children, you know, that's amazing. But but it's also being able to set the precedent so that the next treatment, we're, we're tracking over eighty different gene therapies, cell therapies right now that are, that have moved from the lab into actual clinical trials in human. And and they're coming. And we, we need people to have access to them like your son. So thank you for everything you're doing. Thank you for sharing your story.
I do it for this little boy. I do it for him. I do.
Thank you, Jamie.
You're welcome. Wow. Well, thank you so much to Doug and Jamie and Jamie for sharing her powerful story. We have, I think I can speak for everyone at FBC when I say we have such incredible respect for all of the parents who are out there who are fighting for and advocating and researching and putting in all the work for their kids. And I second Doug's comments, you know, go visit approvedluxturna.ca. I will send all of the information out to everyone after today and follow the email. And if you have any questions, you can let us know. But we really, really encourage you to make your voice heard in these advocacy efforts to get this treatment available to all Canadian patients. So Doug, I understand that you have some more updates for us and I think you're going to be joined by a familiar face, Anne Morrison, who's FBC's Director of Philanthropy. So I'm going to turn it over to the two of you now.
Anne's moving around my screen here. So go ahead, Anne, please.
Oh, thanks, Doug. Hi. Yeah, I was just reflecting on Jamie's story. I can't believe how similar it is to our families. Albeit, it was 25 years ago that Gavin was diagnosed with an inherited retinal disease and but all, all the same feelings that Jamie had with regards to Anthony I had with our son Gavin and we were, we were so relieved when 10 years later he got his genetic diagnosis. I really felt like we had made such a big progress with that news. I felt like, well, you know what? We need to have this in order for whatever the next steps may be. When, when a treatment is available, it will be, if it's gene specific, they'll need to know that or will need to know his gene. And so I'm just really grateful that research has progressed so much in the last 25 years and that we are getting closer and closer and that we're at a point with that there is actually a a treatment like Luxturna. And I'm just going to stress that I didn't realize that we need to do the approved Luxturna. Fill it in again, a second time. I did it way back when, when, when we were asked to, but I didn't realize that there is a second wave to get the premiers really moving so that they understand that it's taking too long. So if you've done it once, you can do it again. I think his message is, am I right, Doug? Yes.
Absolutely. We, when the provinces finally, after a year of thinking about it, doing their homework, agreed to negotiate access to Luxturna with with the supplier, we updated the message. And and the message now is get this thing negotiated. So the first, the first message was start negotiation. Now it's get the negotiations done so that we can move on and and have each individual province agree, sign the contract and get access for for those Canadians waiting.
Well, I think that's along the lines of my next question, which I'm hoping that you can answer for our audience. I know a little bit about the advocacy efforts of Fighting Blindness Canada. But can you, can you go into more detail about why it's so important that we take on this role?
Absolutely, Anne. You know, it is, we've been funding research. We've seen such an amazing advancement in vision research in the country. And and now we're at that stage. We're at the stage where treatments are moving from the lab into actual clinics. And 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 Luxturna is the first case. So so it's very important. So Fighting Blindness Canada has, has really got, we've got four initiatives underway as we're trying to improve access to treatment. And the first activity is really understanding, providing the numbers. We, so we've been doing funding, health population, research, quality of life research. So we're trying to tell the story about what it means living with one of these diseases. And and also give the stats. So we did last year, we worked with our vision partners, the Canadian Council of the Blinds, the optometrists, the ophthalmologists. And and we released a cost of vision loss study that defined that one in five, or sorry, one in eight Canadians, or one in five Canadians, let's get this right. So one in five Canadians, over eight million are living with a blinding eye disease that puts them at significant risk of losing their sight. We did the year before to help move government forward. We did an IRD counts to help tell the story about what is the social economic impact, what it means, what's the impact on families, on people living with these conditions. And it's so vital. We don't have a lot of Canadian data. And and when we're talking to the decision makers, we need to tell our Canadian story. So that's one, health population data. The second is, we have been, Fighting Blindness Canada has been taking the lead to be able to tell the story to the decision makers, the regulators that that make the recommendations to government about whether or not a new treatment should be funded. And so we, we've done the work around what it is. We've asked our community, you've responded so well. The people who who respond to our surveys, they tell the story. And and it makes a real impact. I was shocked. Actually, we got a letter back from, from one of the regulators who said Fighting Blindness Canada, your submission was perfect. It told the story, what it means if this new treatment gets funded and what it will have as an impact in daily life and and on the individual and their family. So filling out those surveys when we ask is so important to tell the story. The, the other two ways now is we're, we're asking you, we're trying to give you voice. We're trying to help you stand up and speak up. And so we have two activities now that we're asking people to do. One is signing a petition to called StopVisionLoss.ca. That's the website. If you go to Stop VisionLoss.ca, one word, dot ca, you will have a petition to encourage the government to implement a vision health plan. They promised it five times since 2003 and it's well overdue. And we need, we need a vision plan. We need to set priorities. We need to talk about preventing having, stopping the crisis of preventable blindness. And and we need a critical investment in vision research. And so that, that's the petition, StopVisionLoss.ca. And then as we've been talking about right now, they're negotiating. We need to speed it up. It's been over six months and and people are losing sight unnecessarily. And and we need the treatment to work. And that's why approvedluxturna.ca is critical to send a note to your premier, to send a note to your health minister and your local provincial representative so that that we can accelerate this process and people can get access.
So I, I really, I really want Luxturna to be approved and soon. But how are your, how are the advocacy efforts of Fighting Blindness Canada helping those, those families like mine, whose loved one doesn't have LCA caused by the mutation of the RPE65 gene?
Well, Anne, it's, it's critical that that we do get approved Luxturna approved and and that it is accessible, that it is publicly funded. And the reason for that is, it's the first, it's the first innovative treatment that is ready for the clinic. And so our work is to set the precedent because as, as we are tracking those over eighty clinical trials where we're right from the lab, making it into the clinical trial, hopefully getting into approvals that can come to Canada, you know, it is, it is absolutely critical. We set the precedent so that Jamie and others, you know, Norris, Mum, Sitka in Nova Scotia, you know, they're, they're telling their story. They're doing things that, that, you know, make them a little bit uncomfortable, not what they really plan to do. And but they're doing it because they're trying to get access to treatment. So we, we need to fast track this. We need to set the precedent. While you approved Luxturna, you should approve the new treatment X. And and hopefully speed it up so that Canadians could get access and we don't have to lose vision or have vision loss unnecessarily.
Agreed. So, but what happens if Luxturna is, you know, not publicly funded? What then? What will we do then? What if the government decides not to?
Yeah, well, first off, we have to do everything we can that, that, that won't happen. And you know, there, there, there is hundreds of clinical trials around the world for age-related macular degeneration, diabetes-related vision loss, glaucoma. You know, the 80 odd trials that we're tracking for inherited retinal diseases. You know, that, that is a critical for people, you know, we, it, it's encouraging researchers that their ideas, the work and an effort to solve those questions are actually going to be able to reach people and change their lives. You know, it's, if, if we don't get Luxturna approved, then Canada is going to be passed by on some of these treatments. You know, 25 countries have already approved Luxturna, including Canada, as a treatment. You know, 19 of them have figured out how to get the pathway to get public funding. You know, that, that's, that's saying an awful lot. You would think Canada would be with the United Kingdom, with Germany, France, the United States, Australia, even Croatia's figured out how to do this. Right? And and almost 14 months ago, they figured out how to do it. But Canada's not in that group. And we, you know, we need access to innovative medicines. And and you know, the reason is simple. You know, we did our study, the cost of vision loss study. And we found that one in five, eight million Canadians, I said it right this time, that said that that are living with a blinding eye disease that puts them at significant risk of losing their sight. That number is going to grow to 13.9 million by 2050. You know, there are 1.2 million Canadians have uncorrectable vision loss. Research has not found a treatment for those people. We need to support researchers to accelerate those treatments, to find the treatments, to be able to restore sight. And that number is going to grow to 2 million Canadians. If we don't support research, if we don't convince government to support approved Luxturna, then those type of research doesn't happen. And and Canada, and and there's an impact, not only on the individual lives and their families, but it is, it is a cost to society. So that, that's why it's so critical. It's so critical that that we get Luxturna approved and that we set up the precedent that we support the research innovation, not only in Canada but around the world, to be able to prevent blindness and restore sight.
I agree. So let's get, tell everybody to go sign, do their surveys. That's, and and to share them with their friends. I loved when Jamie said she got all her friends and family involved to sign them. It really is what we need to do at that grassroots level to to be heard. So I love it and and thanks for just reminding all of us how important it really is.
Thank you, Anne. And and I really encourage people to visit, there are two sites, StopVisionLoss.ca and ApproveLuxturna.ca. So back to you, Morgan.
And I'm on you. There we go. Thank you so much, Doug and Anne. Always great to hear from both of you. And I'd like to invite Larissa and Susan to rejoin us, put their cameras back on. And we're going to take a few moments to answer any questions that our audience have. So please do feel free to send them in either through the Q and A box at the bottom of your Zoom screen, or you can email me education@fightingblindness.ca. So we, my first question, I actually have one before, Bailey sent this in over social media. And they were asked, how do I sign up to get experimental treatments or clinical trials to restore my vision? So I'll pass that one over to Larissa for starters.
Sure. So there's a few things that you can do to, I'm both find out about new treatments as well as to, you know, see if you're eligible. So I would say the first thing that we always suggest is, of course, talk to your doctor to see if they, they have any suggestions about, they knew about any clinical trials, if they can put you in touch with an expert who does. Another thing you can do is you can look on clinicaltrials.gov or on our website, depending on the type of eye disease you have, on clinicaltrials.gov is a really extensive database of all the clinical trials taking place largely around the world. And most these are vetted clinical trials. So if it's on clinicaltrials.gov, you can have a higher confidence that this is a legitimate trial. And you can type in about your eye disease. If you know the gene mutation you have and you can see if there's any trials available on fightingblindness.ca, we also have a list of clinical trials which are largely focused on inherited retinal diseases. If you have any questions about that, you can feel free to contact Morgan at healthinfo@fightingblindness.ca and she can give you more information. And then the last thing I would suggest is if you have an inherited retinal disease, I would suggest joining the patient registry. So the patient registry is a medically secure database that is run out of five of the top or maybe six of top IRD clinics in Canada. But anybody across Canada can join. And again, you can go on our website, get information. Say you're interested and we'll send you the information you need for your closest intake site. And what, as part of the registry, your diagnosis, if you have a gene mutation that will be entered into, then if clinical trials become available that you are eligible for, the clinician is able to contact you because you are in in this database. Otherwise, it can be really difficult for doctors to to know who is eligible. So there was a lot of different things you can do. And in all situations, we always tell people, if you hear about a clinical trial, something to make, to know if it is legitimate, first of all, you shouldn't have to pay for any of your expenses. If you have to pay for either the treatment or even your travel expenses, that normally does not happen in a legitimate clinical trial. But first and foremost, before joining any clinical trial, talk to your eye doctor. So they can really help you decide if it is appropriate for you.
That's great. Thanks, Larissa. And I think I'll stay with you actually for a minute. I see a question in our Q and A here from Gillian. So Gillian is asking, do you think that going forward, vaccine status will affect people's participation in clinical trials? She says she's heard rumors to this effect and just looking for more information.
I'm sorry, I don't have a, a, a clear answer either way. I haven't heard of a vaccine status affecting eligibility per se. I looked up because I saw the question. I did look up on clinicaltrials.gov a few clinical trials that I know are ongoing. And I couldn't see on the eligibility status that vaccine status was a requirement. It doesn't mean it isn't, but at least what was listed wasn't. I think a lot of it will depend on the future of the pandemic and the how common vaccines become in our everyday life. So for instance, in the States, I know they don't have a lot of vaccine mandates. For a lot of places, the hospitals are a different ballgame. So yeah, I, I don't, I really don't know. So I think that's about all I can, can say to that. I think it probably will be on a case by case basis. And also really dependent on the, how the pandemic proceeds.
Can I, can I just add one thing? I actually interpreted that question differently. So Gillian, I may, I may have this wrong, but but you know, I, I actually think just the amazing response by Canadians to get a vaccine says an awful lot about the power of science and and to be able to deliver so quickly this vaccine. You know, almost 86% of Canadians over the age of five have been fully diagnosed. And and I, and I think that's quite an amazing statement of support to the power of research, to the power of science, to provide a solution to help stop the, the most devastating impacts of this pandemic. And I, and I think that that's a great sign for organizations like Fighting Blindness Canada, where we're, we're investing in science and research in order to accelerate treatments. And you know, I always, it actually reminds me of a quote that, that was sent to me when I first joined Fighting Blindness by a member of the community. And and it's from Helen Keller. And it, it says, you know, the And it, it says, you know, the quote that Helen Keller wrote was, uh, alone, we can do so little. Uh, together, we can do so much. And I, and I think the story of how Canadians have embraced science and have embraced the vaccine is, is a real shot in the arm for research and the power of research to offer hope. And, and, uh, potential in this case, uh, you know, uh, some, something to alleviate the devastating impacts of, of the pandemic.
I appreciated your shot in the arm and now let you turn Doug's, that was very apropos. It's good. Um, awesome. I have another question here. It's coming in from Sarah. Um, so Sarah is asking, I would, uh, be interested in joining a planning committee for one of the events that are coming up. Uh, how can I get more involved? So I'll pass that one over to Susan.
Well, let me just get right on that then, Sarah. Thank you so much. Uh, we so appreciate the help of all of any and all of our volunteers for all of our events. We don't, we don't do it alone. We do it and support our committee members in every city. Really simple. Just send us an email at info@fightingblindness.ca and it'll make its way to the right event person and we would welcome you anytime. Thank you.
Awesome. Well, thank you for that question. We always, uh, rely so heavily on our committees. It'd be great to have more people getting involved. Um, okay. So I have another one here, um, for, I think I'll get, give this one to Doug. Uh, it's a, it's a good question. How much do you, FBC, invest in research?
Uh, well, that, that's a great question. Thank you, Morgan. And, and, uh, you know, I, I, I'm amazed actually, you know, uh, for every dollar that we raise, over half of that is invested into our mission programs. And, and it's been, uh, just the tremendous success thanks to our, our donors and supporters during the pandemic. Uh, because Susan and her team have been quite challenged. We, we haven't been able to do in-person events. So we're just getting back there. And, and it's held us back. We, we, almost a million dollars, uh, we, we weren't able to raise compared to when we do these in-person events. And, and yet the community stepped up. Uh, we were able to raise more money than we've ever raised before. Uh, almost, uh, two million dollars compared to before the pandemic. Like that, that's an amazing statement of commitment to the community. And that meant that, you know, over half of that, we were able to invest into our mission programs.
Oh, that's fantastic. That's so exciting. Uh, I love to hear that. And especially after the, the difficult few years we've had the past few, it's, it's really wonderful. So I'm going to give a last call for any audience questions. I have a question for Anne. And every year you participate in Cycle Forsight, you have a big team, you go all out. And I absolutely love watching uh, what you and your team, the Crankers do. Last year you had this like really cool water bike. I love seeing that. So I'm just wondering what you're doing this year, what your plans are and how you're going to participate, uh, in Cycle Forsight.
Well, thanks, Morgan. I love Cycle Forsight. It's, I have to be honest with you. Started as a volunteer. Um, all staff was asked to volunteer. So many years ago, um, I guess probably in the very early days and, uh, I was a volunteer waving and people on and making sure they were safe going through an intersection or something. And then I went, wait a minute, these people look like they're having a really good time. I think maybe better time than I am. So, uh, I, uh, it was a, a signature, I mean, a, a milestone birthday for my husband and I that year. Uh, and I decided that bikes were going to be the, uh, gift of choice. And so we, we purchased some road bikes and, uh, and we did Cycle Forsight, just the two of us that year with my nephew. And then we decided we got to get a tandem bike and we bought a tandem bike and that nephew captained it for my son, uh, who hadn't been on a bike in years. Um, the, just because of his vision loss, he didn't feel comfortable riding, um, solo anymore. So to get on a tandem bike was a really neat, um, experience for him. And imagine putting all the trust in the person in front of you. Uh, my husband and I tried riding at one time and I literally was um, screaming, I am about to jump off if you don't stop right now. It was just like, uh, for me, it was scary not to be the captain of my own bike. But, uh, um, anyways, these are great riders. It's such a feel-good event. I love being with everybody. I ride up behind because of the little, um, license plates that the, the group makes, that, um, Susan's team makes these license plate that's have our names on them in plastic and they're on the back of our seats. So as soon as I can, because we all look the same, we're all wearing the same jersey, right? So you don't, you don't recognize your friend unless you've memorized their helmet. So you ride up to see what their name is on the back and then I'm, oh, hi, 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 I know you. Nice to meet you, you know, like, or, or I I hear your name on the leaderboard. So anyways, I have a great time and, uh, because we can get back together in person, I'll be up at Alston with my team and, uh, looking forward to seeing everybody and riding with whoever will ride with me. And that's, uh, you know, my, my kids finally said, Anne, Mom, you gotta keep up. Like, you can't expect us to ride with you all the time. You have to keep up. So, uh, that's been my incentive. Been doing some spinning classes this winter with, uh, Mike Porter and, uh, the Positive Edge. He offers those for Cycle Forsight participants and, uh, he's got more energy than you can imagine. So, uh, I, I encourage you to check it out, but come with us to, um, Alston. And if you can't, if you don't feel like riding, but you want to cheer people on, it makes all the difference, especially in those last few kilometers where you just can't wait for the finish line. So anyways, that's what I'll be doing, Morgan. I'll be, uh, just trying to get across that finish line again.
Amazing. And I love it. That's fantastic. So I think that we're, we're out of questions for today and we're, we're almost at the end of our time. So I just want to thank, uh, all of our staff and our special guests for joining us today. Uh, you know, if anyone ever asks me what I like most about my job, I always say that it is the incredible team that we work with. Uh, they're so amazing and passionate about what we do. And I think that that passion really showed here today and all of the amazing initiatives that we're working on. Uh, so please take a moment. There'll be that little survey to pop up at the end. Just take two minutes to fill that out and let us know what you thought. It really means a lot to us. Um, I will send you an email with all information about a full Luxsterna and our viewpoint series. Uh, more to come over the next couple of months for viewpoint. And, uh, of course you can always reach out to us if you have any questions. So thank you again for joining us today. Please stay safe, stay healthy, and we look forward to connecting with you again very soon. Have a great day.
Bye, everyone. Bye.